Good morning, everybody. It is November 4th, 2025. Happy Election Day, everybody. And it's 10:00 AM. And I'm hereby called to order the meeting of the Story County Board of Supervisors in Nevada, Iowa, and invite you all to join us on the Pledge of Legions.
Pledge of Legions to the flag of the United States of America and the Republic for which it stands, one nation, for God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I would entertain a motion for approval of today's agenda.
So moved.
Second, Faisal?
Aye.
Merkin, aye. Adopted. Public comment number one. I will open the public comment session. And this comment period is for the public to address topics on today's agenda. So anybody who's online or in the room, if you are in the room and you want to make a public comment, please come to the desk here with the microphone online. Please raise your hand if you have a comment. I'll wait a minute. Seeing no one, I will close the public comment session. We'll move on to agency reports. And I welcome Mike Todd from the Community Academy. Good morning. And if you would make sure your mic is on and bring it close to you for the recording. It'll sound louder than you want it to.
All right.
Like that.
All right. Perfect. Well, thank you for having me. I'm Mike Todd, the Executive Director of the Community Academy. And back to let you in on what happened this summer. We received asset funding for the last fiscal year. And yeah, it was best summer yet. So we were at Ames High School again. You know, we're informed by a lot of things. We are, we really believe in prevention. We think a lot of our most pressing issues are complicated, but best served early, right, in youth development. So mental health, homelessness, food insecurity, all those things. And so we, we take an approach where we get kids active in not only helping treat those issues in our community, right, ecosystem degradation, all kinds of things included, but also, we think by what we're doing, preventing the future of them. And as we know, you know, it's like $15 of, of, you know, treatment saved by $1 of prevention money. So it's, it's huge. So, um, so yeah, so, so a lot of this is caused by, um, things related to how brains are developing and kids are, are active next. And, and social media, these sorts of things. And so when they come to the Community Academy, there isn't, there isn't any of that. We're, uh, we're cell phone free and device free and unless we need to use it. So, and they need more to become engaged as lifelong engaged community members. So we looked at some recent statistics, right? 60% of lower income families whose children did not participate in summer programs wanted their children to be able to, but couldn't because of cost. There's, you know, a lot of parents, 42% of parents were unable to consider summer programming specifically because of cost concerns in that same report. And then, but families in the highest income bracket spend more than five times as much on out of school program time activities than families in the lowest income bracket. We have felt at the Community Academy that we are here to address that. And so we've always had a sliding scale. People at the lowest end of the sliding scale pay about 5% of what the, what the top person pays. And that's an automatic thing. They don't have to apply for that. That's just something that we ask them about their income for, and we've always done that. And so every asset ask we give or that we submit in our budget request is based on the number of slots we've already filled in the past each year. And, and asset has always billed itself as a you purchasing services from us, right? So that's the number of services that we can offer. It's that we already have offered. And so that's why, that's what our request is always based on. And I know that's done in a lot of different ways by different agencies. So yeah, so we think these things are more authentic, more nature, more community. That's what kids need. So, and I think you've read our mission. We are after school and summertime. So we, we really do believe that a compliment to the public school experience, public school experiences is really important for a lot of kids, all kids actually, but including the most vulnerable. And we do that through these long-term community-based projects. This isn't daycare. We don't get daycare dollars from asset. We get youth development and we take that seriously, that this is truly about changing youth through, through direct experiences, personalized project-based learning where we're out in the community, helping solve the issues with authentic experiences. A lot of mentoring relationships for these youth development between each other. We do preschool through 12th grade. So there's a lot of, you know, mentoring between the kids themselves, but also the mentors. We hire teachers. So are we, the last thing is we, we hire teachers. And so, um, you know, the big piece of that is that you have professionals who now are understanding how you can engage kids in community as a way of educating them in a very deep way. And, and those teachers go back to their classroom next. And, you know, they were paid for their work in the summer and they do a lot of meaningful work and then they take this back to their classrooms, right? And so this is, we feel changing education as well. So those dollars aren't just developing youth. They're also preventing all these other community issues. They're transforming our communities and our ecosystems and, and changing our teachers to do more of this year round with kids. And so it's a very powerful program for, for, for our community. Started by teachers long ago. And you can go to the next one. So, you know, since 2018, so 2025 is officially our eighth year of summer programming. We are, our main office is at the Collegiate Methodist Annex for now. And, and our summer experience the last couple of years has been held at Ames High School. So that's been a great opportunity for us. If you go to the next, you can see we had a variety of things that we did for the summer of 2025, you know, engaging kids in all kinds of ways. It's not just science. It's everything that's part of the community. Next, a lot of big partners that we, we collaborate with and major ways to do these sorts of things. Next, and then just a, just a couple of highlights. We do have a sliding scale for all the program fees, right? To make sure that they're accessible. We did have a 500% increase in county residents outside of Ames for our summer experience 2025. So I know that was something we talked about last time and we, we, we had a slight increase. And so we, you know, really did try to target that. And 100% of what we were claimed was by county residents outside of Ames. So, so that continues to be that. And, um, you know, any other, you know, increases we get, we, we really do try to utilize for that. One thing that was in the report that I, I did, I know you asked about it last time, was a focus on county residents outside of Ames. Most of our asset money goes to folks at the tiers five and six level. I think there's a table in there that you can look at that, that says in parentheses, like which tier they're from. And so it was really low income families that got all of our money. Except for some of the county money went to people at a higher tier because we decided to, that you might be more interested in helping people outside of county or outside of Ames in the county instead of that. But we can do it however you want. I mean, you tell me, you, nope, you'd rather have somebody in Ames that is at that tier five or six level instead? That's, you know, we'll, we can claim it that way too. We just, any direction is fine. We have, you know, lots of, lots of folks who, who need that. So, and these were three two-week sessions in the summer. So a total of six weeks. And, and there are big projects that they kind of get into groups for during these weeks. They participate in lots of things, but there are some focus areas that they, they utilize and, and choose. And it is an all-day program. So this is something that, you know, we feed them a couple of different snacks throughout the day that we provide. They do provide lunches right now. They bring their own lunches, but if kid doesn't have one, we provide that for him as well. Like I said, a lot of collaborators. We are an asset agency, obviously. Ryman Gardens, Community School District of Ames, City of Ames, the animal shelter is a big one this year for kids. Clayton Farms with our indoor farm at the high school that we, we helped establish. Northcrest Community was a big one this year with some interview projects. And then Food at First is another one for our food security project. So we do a lot of native planting with kids, over 3,000 native plants on public land. Just, this one was outside of Ada Hayden this summer. It was a big need area they had in the swale that they had just kind of reconstructed that leads into the, the, the lake there. And then at Ryman Gardens, we converted over 400 square feet of their turf to native plants. It was outside their fence. They'd been mowing it for years. And so I think this is a project that hopefully will continue for some years to come. And we'll see a lot of, a lot of conversion there to something that they were not interested in mowing and were hoping to partner with us to, to make this a much better ecological situation. And we were their top volunteer for their Grow and Give program, their, their program to feed the hungry. We're involved with them right now and hopefully, hopefully helping them expand what they're doing and, and do some things. But we were their top volunteer for 26 hours. So that's exciting to get kids active with, with real things. The high school, we were managing the school garden and indoor farm throughout the summer. The indoor farm was a recently grant project that the Community Academy was part of. Without the Community Academy support, it's likely that the school district would not have gotten the $40,000 grant that I helped write. So, um, you know, this, the, the Community Academy is the biggest in-kind contributor of, of funding. It was, had to be matched at 50%. We came in with, with $15,000 to help them. And then we have an indoor farm at Ames High School now. And so the Community Academy runs that in the summer. You can see on the next page, and, and we, we harvest a lot indoors and outdoors. We do a lot of donations. On the next. So we donate a lot to Food at First in the summer and the Grow and Give program and volunteered there too. And so that's a big piece of it is food security projects. Another, other projects, we're involved with Animal Shelter. The kids really wanted to help raise money. They were in a, uh, they were doing that this year, trying to close the gap. And so the kids did fundraisers, all three sessions they chose. They wanted to do that and, and go help volunteer as well with anything that they needed. We did an interview project at Northcrest, similar to Story Core, where the kids walked over and we were always spending time with residents, a group of kids was that chose this. And then, um, you know, recorded interviews, learned to edit them, learned to ask interview questions. And then eventually at our public exhibitions, we did have a public exhibition at each session towards the end. And the kids got to, you know, people got to hear those interviews and it was really well-received. And then the paddle project is probably one of my favorite projects of all time. You know, Colin led this group in exploring the woodlands for, for trees, walnuts and ash trees and pine. And then eventually, if you go to the next, you can see they're out exploring these trees and how humans have used them. And then they used wood to, you know, glue them together and hand carve them. And then eventually you can see maybe the hand carving process. It was actually, and then they eventually got to try them out at, at the end of the session out in Ada Hayden. So that was, that was exciting for them to, you know, have this full circle kind of understanding of how the things we use, you know, are out in our world. And, you know, stories like the invasive Emerald Ash Bore and what happened to the ash trees. And so, you know, there's this just kind of full circle, very rich experiences that we want to offer kids in all kinds of ways. And, and we are nimble and quick to be able to implement lots of new projects every year based on our staff. And it's a professional staff. It's, it's, like I said, this is not daycare. This is youth development and community development and teacher development and all of these things at the same time. So, yeah. Questions you have for me?
Supervisor Faisal, do you have any questions?
I'm, I'm, um, I don't know that I have any questions right off the bat, but, um, well, when, when do you open up registrations?
Usually January or February.
And does it fill up pretty quickly?
I think our, sometimes our slots at those, at those bottom levels do fill up. You know, we base that on our funding and, and those sorts of things. But as we get more funding, we'll, we increase those too. So, yeah, no, but it did this year. It did started to fill up by, you know, May or so. But we hold spots for, for folks at those levels. So it's not a first come, first served because that doesn't serve all. So we, we just don't believe that. So, yeah. This is very different than most youth, youth activity types of programs. They don't have these sorts of things built into their, to how they operate, but.
I have a couple of questions. Do you, and I know you have transportation costs involved when you do it, but do you do any experiences outside of the city limits of Ames?
Yeah. So we take a bus, so we, we lease a bus. And so we will definitely, we, every week we're at, at Peterson Park, swimming, exploring the, the areas. We go, we will go down to Jester Park every once in a while. And we will get outside of, into some local farms. I know we're up at Mustard Seed Farm this year. And the teachers really get to decide. And we are trying to, you know, square funding away so we can get a full-time kind of bus driver, which is one of our goals for next year as we try to increase our funding. Because we know that those youth, as they come up with ideas and want to do things and there's opportunities that come about, it's nice to be able to just have a bus driver there to hop in the bus and go, right? But that's, that's something that we would, we'd love.
Good. You've got a lot of information. You've got your sliding fee scale in here, which I appreciate, and the asset funds by funder. I'm wondering what percentage your operations are covered by sources other than asset?
What percentage?
Yeah. There's anything in here about the, you know, other funding sources?
Yeah. So we, we, obviously program fees is a big one for us. It's, we get, I'd say about equal amount from program fees and asset. And then we get more than that from our self-generated revenue from, from fundraising and things like that. So, yeah.
Are you looking for additional sources of funding as?
All the time.
Government funding gets tighter?
All the time. I, I think one of the challenges we have is we're a new organization. So we're, we're the youngest asset agency by many, many, many decades compared to many of them. And so that's a challenge for us because we're not well-recognized. We don't have a national organization. We don't have, you know, these sorts of things. And so I think it, it's one of our big challenges, right? As to how, you know, just to become older. Well, it takes a year to get a year older. So, you know, it's just one of those, those things that we're working on. And, um, you know, it's, it's, it's a unique challenge for a young organization. You know, if we're 60, 80 years old, that's a little bit different when we say, hey, we're the Community Academy. Most people to us are saying, I've never heard of you, you know? And so, you know, they think those are unique challenges for us, but.
I understand what you're saying. Exactly. But here's the thing. And the reason I ask, are you looking for other things? Because asset can't be everything to all agencies. And there's, you know, there's a lot of demand for asset dollars. And couple that with the uncertainty right now about what local, um, what the funding is going to be, revenue sources for local government. It behooves everybody who's involved in the asset process not to just take for granted asset and think there's going to be big increases or even increases at all, but look around for, you know, diversify as much as you can. And I understand with a newer agency, that can be difficult, but I would encourage you to do that. I know you have a great reputation, you know, and that's going to work for you.
Yeah. No, and we did take a big step this year. So we're, we hired a Development Director last year. And she's been part of several things that we think are helping people understand who we are. And we, we were the Northcrest gift this year. And so that was a big step for us. And so the number, for us, the number of donors is always increasing every year. And, uh, that's, that's a great thing for us. It's just, it's just a hill, right? It's, it's sort of like a, you know, yeah. So we're definitely pushing for that, so.
Well, it's great work. I'm glad you get the kids away from phones. I'm glad you get kids outside and I'm glad you get kids helping the community. That's all just wonderful stuff, which will help them be better citizens. So thank you for all that you're doing.
Thank you. And thank you for the support because we really do appreciate it. It is, it has transformed what we're able to do with our organization, so.
We're so glad to hear that.
Thank you.
And thank you for the outreach into the whole county.
Yeah. Yeah, no, you're welcome. And if you have ideas for more ways to get involved, just send them our way.
We'll do that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Next, we have Zach Skelton with the Veterans Affairs Quarterly Report. Good morning, Zach. Good to see you.
All right. Good morning.
Morning.
So with the Veterans Affairs, we've had, uh, through our efforts and outreach, they increased the number of claims and clients coming through our office in the last quarter. For assistance, you can see that we have given about $5,069, which is about a quarter of our funds, which matches well with the quarterly. And then when you look down to the budget there, we've provided 44% of what we have set aside for providing that assistance out to veterans within the community. So we're right on target with, as the year is going. The overall budget as well, 32% of the year is complete and we have used up 27% of the budget. So we were right on track with that. As far as outreach, we've been able to go to quite a few places here in the, in the past quarter. The American, or the Story County American Legion Auxiliary had their county-wide meeting. So all of them were up at Roland. And, uh, the auxiliaries, I came and gave a speech for them and answered questions and was able to provide outreach. And next door, the American Legion was also doing their county-wide meeting. So we were able to meet quite a few people that evening. Couple of weeks ago, I went to the Story County Mental Health Expo. And, uh, our table was located right next to the Vet Center and the VA Healthcare. And we had about 60 people visit our two tables. So quite a few people coming through. Went up to Roland Days and at the Roland Days, sat with the Legion writers and answered a few questions. One of the persons that came up works at Mary Greeley and said, well, how, how does this work for veterans? And how does this work for veterans? Which got to the next outreach, which is going to the Mary Greeley Medical Center and talking to their senior care staff. So that, uh, just provided an education on veterans' benefits and making sure they have our contacts so that since they see quite a few clients and they have questions about veterans, they know where to direct those questions now. As far as statistics, we've actually had, the age of our average veteran has gone down by three years. Last year was at 61 was the average age and right now we're at 58. So we are trying to outreach to the younger veterans, the Gulf War and the post 9/11 era. And it seems like we're getting quite a few of those people coming in and the numbers follow that as well. For the first three months of this year, we exceeded the number of people coming into our office by almost a quarter for three consecutive months. So we have been quite busy with that, but, uh, it's, it's been good interactions. And we've had good results coming from those veterans coming in. For the next steps, we have, uh, this week, we've got a memorial for a headstone. You may remember that we were advertising over the past year through our newsletters and various means. The community came together, provided donations. There was a fund set up at the Story County Memorial. And then they provided those funds for $1,200 for family that couldn't afford the setting of the headstone. The headstone was provided by the VA. It is now there in place. Went and took a picture of it yesterday. It looks wonderful. And then family's going to have a memorial service this Thursday with that, with the Ames Legion providing honors. We have the Veteran's Supermarket on November 8th. And that's our big event for the year. We've got 24 vendors. Some, some of the service organizations weren't able to be there due to the shutdown, but we still have quite a few people there. And that advertising has gone out this year. We tried something new. And Addie Anderson, our admin assistant, put together a wonderful advertisement and coordinated with the North Grand Mall. And there is an advertisement about the three kiosks at the North Grand Mall. So we will see if that maybe increases as a flow of veterans coming into that supermarket. Then just looking at contingency plan with the joining counties, as I'm a Department of one with admin assistant at 20 hours, then there's a risk of if I were to get deployed or have health issues, um, that the office wouldn't have anybody. So just working on contingency planning, setting up a binder so that the commission that is there knows where to find keys, how to access certain things, and then also coordinating with the joining counties. So that's something that we're going to develop into the winter with anticipated slowdown in clients coming in. I'll have a little bit more time to actually work with those adjoining counties to try to develop what that looks like. And then just increasing outreach to local veteran organizations. That's something that slowly is trying to increase through this year, specifically to the organizations such as the American Legion or going to the community center or the town halls in different community. Brett was doing that before. Quite a few people have that. Then they don't have to travel to Ames for that. And that's something that we're, I'm trying to develop throughout this year so that we can do that on a schedule and people can start anticipating that each year. So, um, barring your questions, that's the quarterly report for the VA.
Have you seen any services to veterans affected by the shutdown?
So right now, the VA has only shut down a couple of things. Of the government organizations, many of them are furloughed up to 50 and more percent. The VA is only furloughed at 3%. The services that are affected at the VA right now are the VOKE Rehab. And there is a regional, the regional offices are closed, but they are still doing claims. They're still doing benefits. The VA healthcare is still up and running. So it has been a minimal effect to the veterans. We've still been able to process their claims. The only problems come up within communication because people that you normally call aren't there. But that's more of an internal thing, not something that's affecting the veteran at their level.
And any benefits haven't been interrupted?
No benefits have been shut off or stopped. Uh, all that's still running and all the VA healthcare stuff is still fully operational.
I'm glad you're developing a contingency plan. Do you know for sure which counties you're going to be working with?
I do not yet. So at a minimum, I, I think it would take possibly Boone and Marshall is my original concept and just split the county at 35. And then making sure they understand while our office is out for whatever reason, people, there'd be a message and people would be redirected to their office from there. That's kind of the minimal that I'm looking at. I have not coordinated with Hamilton or Polk yet. That's coming into the winter, so.
Okay.
But that's my initial idea.
Thank you. I don't have any other questions.
Glad to see the, your numbers increasing though. Yeah, that's great. And a lot, all at the same time.
I'm happy to be busy, so.
Thank you.
Just thank you.
Okay. Next, we have Erin Rewards with General Assistance Court of the Report. Good morning, Erin.
Good morning. Morning. Okay. So my quarterly report follows, um, July through the end of September. And so you've got all my statistics here and stuff. We did process 128 applications in July. That was our big number for the quarter. And then I, so my first paragraph just kind of talks about how proud I am of my staff over the summer and this early fall. Cause we were, uh, operating at a deficit ever since middle of May. And, um, it, it carried over into the, you know, the busiest part for us, which is when the leases turn over. And, uh, you know, difficult to do in the summer when people want to take vacations and, and things like that. So everybody did a splendid job and we made it through. So our newest staff member, Shayla McDougall, started on September 29th and she's here today. So we're kind of moving ahead from here. It was almost immediate relief when she started. I know she couldn't do everything on the first day, but just knowing that we had somebody to fill that spot and to carry forward really helped a lot. We, so I am hoping to work on some things that I haven't been able to do for quite a long time. I know you've heard me talk about, you know, changing some of the eligibility criteria, you know, things like that. So we will, I'll begin focusing on those types of things. And, and looking forward to do the, doing those. And then VA-wise, I still continue to meet with veterans and process claims and, and do those types of things the best I could as well. There were some times in there where I told Zach I was out of commission for the VA stuff for, like when Wendy was on vacation and it was just me processing applications. I was like, yep, no. But he's, you know, we've worked that out and it's worked out okay. So, any questions?
I'm, I'm just, every time you come and present this report, I'm, I'm just always shocked by the need in our communities, um, over $200,000 in requests.
Yeah, in just one quarter.
Um, yeah, it, it makes my stomach hurt. I'm glad that you're doing the work you're doing, um, your whole team. And, yeah. I am speechless a lot of times at the level of need in, in Story County, which comparatively is an affluent county. And we just don't talk about it enough.
No. And we actually had our annual GA retreat last week, um, which is just a one day where we get together with all the, whoever shows up, I guess, from around the state for GA directors and staff and that kind of thing. And I haven't had a chance to really tear into it, but they had, um, Iowa. Yep. Thank you. Thank you. Iowa Common Good was there and did a presentation on just kind of data. You know, where to find, where to find data about things. And all three of us were shocked when she put the Story County one up there. I mean, it had our poverty level at almost, was it, it's almost 50? Yeah, it was, the percentage of the poverty level for Story County was just shocking to us, too. We were like, okay, well, this is why we see what we see, I guess. So. I can forward some of that. I see your, yeah, yeah. I need to, I need to spend some time looking at it again and that kind of thing, but, yeah.
I, I remember seeing Reports United, we did several years ago, camera impact reports. And Story County always seemed higher than I imagined it would be, and I always wondered if there was an impact on that on, student populations impact that? And it's not, it's not saying that if students don't have enough income, they don't count. You know what I mean? But I just wonder what the, what the dynamics are about that for Story, particularly, I see Story and Johnson Counties.
Yeah. Yeah, those were the two that were the orange, you know, like our color-coded thing. Yeah, was, those two counties were the orangist, which was as far as you could go on the.
Really?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'd like to dig, yeah. Digging into those numbers would be real interesting.
It sounds, sorry, go ahead.
No, go ahead.
Nope. You. I was just going to say, it sounds like the, the landlord roundtable went well.
Yes, yes.
Glad to hear that. Are there, are there more meetings that kind of populated from that meeting plan?
Yeah, I'm not quite sure where they're going with it, but Wendy's are representative for that. So I'm sure they're not going to, they were very happy with attendance and that kind of thing, so I'm sure it will carry forward. Yeah.
Great.
So I know this is the first quarter report, so on any impacts of the shutdown, and we don't really know the impacts yet. But what have you been hearing, or what have you seen?
Right. We, actually Shayla might be a better, sorry, I keep pulling you in. It's your first time you've ever been here. We, I overheard yesterday, I mean, we had someone from the USDA that's been furloughed. And I don't know how many we've.
Would you, would you be willing to come up to the desk?
You gotta be on the recording.
We want everybody to be able to hear what you're saying. That sounds.
So there's your microphone. Boy, this is.
Good morning.
Good morning. There was a household of three adults that were all employed with the USDA, and they had been furloughed, their final paycheck, 24 of their hours were furloughed, so they weren't paid for that. So they were very concerned about how they were going to pay their monthly expenses for, because we don't know how long the shutdown is going to last. And then I think a lot of the other concerns that we've seen is the SNAP benefits being paused at this time. I know that one of our partner agencies, Salvation Army, Kathy Johnson, is extremely overwhelmed right now. So those are some of the things that we've been seeing as service coordinators in our office.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. I did see some good information the other day from United Web, a lot of businesses that are coming forward, particularly grocery stores and restaurants that are offering food assistance. And I thought that was, that was such good news.
Yep.
So, but still, it's a drop in the bucket compared to the need. So, thank you. Appreciate that.
Thank you.
I think that's.
Do it.
I, great report.
Okay, thank you.
So we'll move on to consideration of minutes. I would entertain a motion.
I would move approval.
Second, Basil?
Aye.
Merkin, aye. Minutes are approved. Consideration of personnel actions?
I would move approval of personnel actions.
Second, Basil?
Aye.
Merkin, aye. Approved. And then, consideration of claims?
I would move approval of claims as presented.
Second, Basil?
Aye.
Merkin, aye. And on to consent agenda. Would entertain a motion there?
I would move approval of consent agenda as presented.
I would second that. Basil?
Aye.
Merkin, aye. Consent is approved. Going on, we have no public hearing items. We have additional items. The first one is discussion and consideration of Resolution 26-31, voluntary annexation to the city of Huxley for certain parcels, as noted in the agenda. Jan Harder, good morning.
Good morning. Yeah, this Resolution 2631 is being brought to the board in consideration of an annexation to the city of Huxley. It's about 41.12 acres. It's located on, along east, it does include Ridgeway. It's located along East First Street slash 315th Street in Section 24 of Palestine Township. It's currently under the ownership of SMDB Huxley Holdings LLC. It is adjacent to existing corporate limits and on our C2C plan, designated as agricultural conservation area and natural resource areas. The consultation meeting was held on October 20th, to which the board was invited. The resolution in front of you is in support of the annexation as described in the materials. I'll be glad to answer any questions.
What happens, I should probably know this already, but what happens if something is designated as a natural resource area or conservation area and a city annexes it in? Does that, is that up for redesignation by the city then?
Right. Those designations are purely in our own C2C plan. In some cases, and in this case, there's floodplain property in the southern part. I believe that's why some of the natural resource areas there. That floodplain is also part of the special flood hazard area that's governed by the National Flood Insurance Program, which Huxley is bound to enforce as well. So the floodplain's the same.
Gotcha. That was my only question.
I have no questions. Any discussion? If not, I'd consider a motion to approve Resolution 2631.
I would move approval of Resolution 26-31.
Second, Basil?
Aye.
Merkin, aye. Approved. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Colin Gerst to discuss license fees between Story County and CDW, for software and maintenance. Good morning.
Good morning.
And welcome. Yes.
IT does what it does best and comes in here and picks on you. So I have an invoice here that is unbudgeted. It is very broadly what the county uses for our email security and some of our internet browsing URL, what's called URL filtering. I believe the previous director had a plan in place for this fiscal year to change out this service to a different provider, a different vendor. And there's two pieces to this, you know, piece of software as well. It's something that I also kind of looked at as soon as I started here last month about moving to get that done. I got some prices in place on what that cost would be, but in order for it to really make sense fiscally, we'll have to wait until next year for our license renewal, for our, our mail Office 365, for all the folks here at the county to really get the benefit for it. So if we make our changes in our security posture for our email over to that next year during that renewal, the cost is, is, it'd save the county like $10,000 doing that. And then the other half of this is the internet browsing security. We're probably just going to move that to another service or one of our firewalls internally and do that around the same time. But to kind of rush this and do it, hey, let's hurry up and, and do it now, I think would cause more problems for the county than anything. And since this is such a security issue for the county, I, I fully believe that we should kind of kick this down the road until next year and then make that transition a lot smoother for next year.
I think that makes a lot of sense.
Did you have any questions about this at all, or?
I do not. Do you have any questions?
No, just that there was, there was some savings early on in the year, ability to buy computers through last year's budget. So it's my understanding this, even though it's unbudgeted, should be absorbable into the existing budget.
Correct, I believe so.
Okay.
Okay.
All right. Thank you, board.
I would entertain a motion.
I would move approval.
Second, Basil?
Aye.
Merkin, aye.
Thank you.
Is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. We have no department reports. We do not have other reports. You have any upcoming agenda items? I don't either at this time. So I will open public comment session number two, which is comments for the, from the public on items not on this agenda. Board may not take any action, do the requirements the open meeting saw, but may do so in the future. If there's anybody who has a public comment at this time, please raise your hand if you're on Zoom or please come to the desk if you're here in person. I'll wait a second. Seeing no hands raised, seeing nobody move to the front, I will close public comment session. And we will do liaison assignments, committee meeting updates, and announcements from the supervisors. Supervisor Basil, what do you have?
Yeah, just for an announcement, just again, it's election day. Thank an election worker if and when you see them, and get out and vote if you haven't done that yet. I have an appointment at the end of the day today, but I'll be in the office until about 3:00 today. I will be in the office tomorrow. No meetings until the afternoon, and I'll be taking those here. Then we have the memorial Thursday morning. I have an alternatives arrest diversion meeting in the afternoon. A housing trust meeting with, well, it's not a housing trust meeting. I have a meeting with Story County Community Foundation to talk about the housing trust. And then YWCA board meeting Thursday night. Friday, I will be at an audit committee meeting in the morning for CCJ, and then I'll be in Eldora most of Friday doing interviews for the executive director there. And Monday, we have a special meeting for Story County Housing Trust, but that is all I have on Monday so far.
Okay.
And then Veterans Day on Thurs, on Tuesday.
Veterans Day is on Tuesday. I'm going to be here tomorrow morning for a meeting. I will be off on personal business tomorrow afternoon, Thursday and Friday. I will be at the VA supermarket on Saturday. And Monday, I have Conservation Board, I believe. Yes, I do. Conservation Board, and at the same time, a groundbreaking in Gilbert, so I don't think I'll make both of those. But that's, that's my week. I would entertain a motion for us to go into closed session pursuant to Iowa Code Section 21.51(c). Discuss strategy with counsel.
I would make that motion.
I would second that. Basil?
Aye.
Merkin, aye. Okay, we're going to close session then. Okay, we are back in open session, and I would entertain a motion.
I move we enter into a joint defense agreement with Black Hawk and Johnson Counties in Salterburg et al v Reynolds et al.
And I second the motion. Any discussion? If not, Basil?
Aye.
Merkin, aye. And motion carries, and I would entertain a motion for adjournment.
I move we adjourn.
I would second that motion. Basil?
Aye.
Merkin, aye. We are adjourned. Thank you.